At this time I'd like to call this regular meeting which has been reset to a Tuesday on September 5th and duly posted the Central City Commissioner to order and call upon Commissioner Mike Masmore to lead us in an invitation.
Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit on earth.
He's joining me in the bunch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand in, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome everybody to our City Commission meeting here tonight. Thank everyone who is helping to support our friends and neighbors to the north who've been so much affected by the terrible storm that hit the coastal bend region. This time we'll go right to item number one, which is the presentation of the following proclamations. The first one is a proclamation proclaiming the week of September 17 through September 23rd as Constitution Week. And I'd like to ask representatives of the AAR to come up, Tomasito White, Peggy Morris, and Diana Clark. All right, we're prompting us to issue this proclamation. Whereas the Constitution, the United States of America, the liberty of our liberties and body of its express freedoms, government and republic dedicated to the rule and rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2017 marks 230th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which were commemorated. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation in a year by the President of the United States of America designating the 17th, September 23rd, 2017 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23, 2017, as Constitution Week in the City Parlament. And to hereby ask for the citizens to reaffirm that ideals framed in the Constitution had in 1787 by visionably protecting the freedom guarantee to us through this guardian of our liberties. Thank you all for, again, reminding the community of how important it is that we remember what our foundation and our country is based upon and what the rule of law in this country is based upon. Very thankful for being there. Great pleasure to be here. If I said that? All right. All right. Thank you very much. Next we have proclamation in memory of 9/11. And I'd like to ask Peter Douglas III, sincerely resigned, joining in here to present the proclamation. But he was just a new member of our Veterans Advisory Board. So he has brought this to our attention. And so we want to remember 9/11 through this proclamation. Whereas we upvoc the attacks of September 11, 2011, upon America by foreign terrorists that thrust the United States and other countries into a war never envisioned militarily or diplomatically. Whereas challenges facing all civilized people of the world as they relate to the war on terrorism will not end until those terrorists responsible are brought to justice. Whereas America is fully committed to ensuring our freedom and rights for all generations, now forever. Whereas world opinion should remain focused on the elimination of these terrorist acts perpetrated around the globe. Whereas one way to accomplish this is to never forget that the innocent victims of 9/11 and subsequent attacks did not die in vain. And whereas America, in my fact, by reminding the world of the deaths of many people who died on 9/11, will always be remembered and they will be forever loved. And whereas an appropriate way to accomplish this is through the annual celebration of those living. And whereas this commemoration should be conducted each September 11 through the land to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, the demonstration of America's resolve and perseverance to win the war for freedom, the advancement of responsible citizenship, the encouragement of patriotism and love of country, and the poignant remembrance of those innocent victims who died September 11, as heroes one and all. Be a resolved, and I, Mayor Chris Boswell, with City Parlament, am issuing this proclamation to memorialize those men, women, and children who lost their lives. And be a further resolved, this proclamation be publicized for all seats. And know that the citizens of Park Place and State's Parlament remember with eternal respect those whose lives were suddenly and without cause and pointlessly taken from them on September 11, 2011. And if you ever rest in peace and alive in our memories. I'll present this to Douglas. And thank you for bringing this. I think it's a nice fitting that we're presenting both the proclamation on the Constitution again this day of remembrance on September 11.
Thank you, sir. I do want to say that it's not just the Park Place residents, but it is the City of Harlingen, Corinth Baptist Church on the west side that are all together and partnered in this effort. So thank you again, and I appreciate it. And I pray that you all come out 9/11 Monday, 4 o'clock. It's a buffet to follow after the ceremony. But please, come on out and share. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate you.
All right, item two is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 16, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
No motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda items 3A through H, it's our motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Some move, Mayor.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item four, consideration and possible action to approve the police department purchase of 43 in-car mobile video records from WatchGuard Video Company for $298,195.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, I'm Mike Kestner, Assistant Chief. We are requesting approval to purchase these in-car video systems for each of the marked units in the police department. It'll replace the old system that's been going down for quite some time now. It'll allow us to upgrade and really provide a better service to the community. So I can answer any questions you might have.
If the Mayor and Commissioner will remember, we had this in next year's budget. We took it out. We're going to utilize some savings from this year to buy them down.
All right. So is there a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Motion to second any other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item five, consideration and possible action to approve the police department purchase of 23 electronic ticket riders from Tyler Technologies for $92,755.2.
Tyler Technologies is the current vendor for the police department's records management system as well as CAD. They also own the ENCODE system used by Municipal Court. So the purchase of these ticket riders, again, updates the old equipment that we have and allows us to provide a better service. The option otherwise is to go back to writing handwritten tickets, which I don't think anybody wants to. The funds for this one are from a grant, a JAG grant partially. Also Municipal Court has kicked in almost $30,000. Then the rest is coming from the police department's forfeiture funds.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to second any other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. That we can provide these equipment upgrades to our departments. Thank you. Item six, consideration and possible action to approve resolution accepting Valley International Airport's adopted budget for fiscal year 2017-18. Mark Easterly, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you having me here today. I'm here and delighted to issue or show you the 2017-2018 budget for your approval. On August 28 of 2017, the airport board had approved this budget. And I'll be happy to go through it, some of the highlights of it, and answer any questions you may have. Up here on the screen is our revenue. And 2017 adopted budget was $6,143,500. 2018 proposed revenue budget is $6,270,000. You can see there from the line items that actually had the greatest impact on the budget was a parking lot increase down to the small items, a small hangar increase of $7,000 in hangar rental. And number six there, all the other items equaled about $600. On the expense side, up here at the top, you can see just over $6 million in expenses. That was increased in 2018 to $6,189,000. Those are the items there, one through nine. Happy to go through them line by line on them if you wish, or answer any questions related to those. Those are the top contributors to the increase in expenses. So just to get down to the dirty, we have 2017 adopted budget. We actually were able to save. I think we originally had a $150,000 loss we were projecting, but by mid-year, we were able to turn that around to, and we're at a $70,000 increase for 2017. 2018 proposed income is about $81,000. We have several capital improvement projects from some SBCA tanks for the ARF personnel, also Tempco Sweeper, one pickup truck, and some miscellaneous items for concave operators and tractors. So our total capital expenses was $199,000. We had capital improvements at the airport projected to replace the fan coil units in the terminal building. This past year, we did all of the air handler units, and this will complete that project. We are also looking at doing, with FAA's assistance, public flooring, replacing the tile inside the terminal building, looking at some type of terrazzo, an epoxy terrazzo, if we get that far. We have a reconstruction of the northwest and southwest concrete aprons at the airport. That's an additional $2.5 or $3.5 million. 90% of that coming from FAA and the other 10% coming from PFC. So real quickly, projected cash flow for the year, the few years coming out, 2017, 2018. This is the projected cash flow. At the bottom there, the ending cash is $753,000. That did include the purchase of the Lynx Building that is still under negotiation, although we're not under contract currently. And so all those numbers projected out there throughout the next few years, you can add the $1.1 million if, in fact, we don't close on that particular building. I can answer any questions?
Okay, if I have any questions for more? Ben, is there a motion to approve the budget as approved by Valley Management Airport Board?
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, thank you. Item seven, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution accepting the Development Corporation Parlament's budget for fiscal year 2017-18. Rodelle Garza.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you. We've had two budget workshops in the past month, and we also had another formal board meeting this afternoon where we approved the budget that is in your packet. And just to go through the budget and some of the highlights, the revenues for the major categories are sales tax, obviously, is one of the major category, which represents over 75% of the budget. Our projections for next year are $4.578 million for revenues that are sales tax revenues. And we've got loan repayments and investment earnings of $18,700, which is about 0.31% of the budget. Another category is the rental income, which represents about 5% of the budget, is $343,066 for the rents that we collect on the properties that we own. And also for some of the inter-fund and miscellaneous revenues that we have, about another 5% or 6%, $355,027 that we're expecting. We are transferring $761,000 from our fund balance into our general fund for the year, which means we have a deficit budget. But we've had two surplus budgets in the previous two years. And so basically, some of the spending that we hadn't done is going to hit this coming year. And so actually, the surpluses have exceeded this deficit, and they're above $800,000. Our cash balance two years ago was less than $3.5 million. As at the end of next year, it'll be slightly above $3.5 million in cash alone, not including all the other assets that we have. So we're standing in good shape, continuing to build that cash balance, and also continue to add other assets to the bottom line. On the expenditure side, we've got four main categories, and the largest of which is our debt service and our projects, which account for about 75% of the budget. We'll be spending $4.5 million in those projects, 3.2 of that being debt service. And so that's the biggest part of the budget. The other big parts, on the administrative expenses, which is about 11% of the budget, we're at $702,500, which is a slight increase over last year, but we didn't have a position filled last year, which we do now, and we will be in the future. We also have marketing expenses, and this is the one that's really exciting for us, of $441,400, which is about a 20% increase over last year's budget, basically because we're doing more. We're getting out more, we're spreading the word more. We're doing more with our digital marketing. And so when you're doing more and traveling more, you're exposing the opportunities that Harlingen has to others outside the area. It does cost a little bit more. And then, of course, we have some other contracts, which is about 5% of our budget, with a slight decrease from last year's budget, at $333,000. Those are kind of the highlights of the budget. We're going to continue to market the assets that we have, like the Los Angeles Bridge, the industrial park, Valley International Airport, the port, our medical district, if you will, both of the hospitals, and all the ancillary assets that come along with those two hospitals. We're going to continue to attend as many trade shows as we can. Typically, it's about one per month. Sometimes, some of these months, it'll be two or three. We've got some mission trips planned to some of our corporate citizens' headquarters. And then we've got some other pretty interesting projects that we'll be able to tell everybody about in a few more months.
Anybody have any questions for Rodelle?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the Economic Corporations Budget as presented?
Some move. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you to you and your board for solid budget. Appreciate it. Item eight is the consideration and possible action to approve resolution accepting downtown improvement of the budget for 2017-18.
We got table that.
Okay, we're going to pass that. Not ready on that. Item nine, consideration and possible action to approve bids and work contract for hot mix asphalt material under informal bid number 2017-10.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. The item before you, it's a supply contract for the purchase of asphalt. This is the material that our Public Works crews use throughout the year. On average, we're consuming about 1,200 tons of asphalt, and we're spending about $80,000 annually. We solicited bids, and the bids came in lower than what we're actually paying currently in the current contract. Frontera Materials is the company that's being recommended. They have a delivery price at $57.10 per ton and $51 if we send our trucks to go pick it up at the plant. Staff is recommending approval.
Where is their point?
There are two plants. There's, Frontera Materials has one in Brownsville, and the other one is in Progreso.
And have you dealt with this one yet?
Yes, we have.
And do you find, are you sending the guys more to pick them up, or do you usually deliver? What do you normally do?
I would, typically, we send them to go pick it up. Because we have these, what we call pro-patcher, pieces of equipment. So you fill the hopper with hot asphalt, and it maintains it hot for days. So that way, we can get to utilize it. So we just send the equipment to go get filled up and bring it back. I'd just rather we get it delivered.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the bids and award the contract to Frontera? We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 10 is a consideration and possible action to approve resolution to certify local funding and support for the submitter of Loop 499 sidewalk improvement project to the statewide transportation alternative set aside program for funding competition for the Texas Department of Transportation 2017 program. Call for proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. The staff, engineering staff submitted five applications back in April to the Texas Alternative Set Aside Program. We have been contacted by Texas. They asked for additional information supplemental specific to the Loop 499 sidewalk improvement project. This is the installation of a sidewalk six foot wide along Loop 499 at Cary, from Rio on the road to FM 106 at approximately 1.48 miles or 7,820 linear feet. The resolution at this point is just a resolution that commits and shows support, financial support from the City of Harlingen in the event that it was to be selected. The projects or the applications are still being reviewed. The estimated project cost for this is $422,275. It is an 80-20 match, which would entail that the city would be responsible for $84,455. However, the city qualifies for an economic disadvantage county program reduction in the cost of $56,303, which brings the total financial obligation for the city to $10,557. In the resolution, we're requesting that the amount of $25,000 be established as a not-to-exceed amount in the event that we have unforeseen expenses. Again, this is if and when, or if the project was to be selected for funding by Texas. Staff's recommending approval.
This sidewalk picks up for our walking trail, kind of ends there at Harrison and 499.
It's from Harrison going north to Rio on the road.
And so we'll now have, if this happens, we'll now have a walking trail that takes us all the way up to Basin Rio Honda Road.
Yes.
And I believe their sidewalk picks up basically pretty close to there.
Going.
Going towards DSTC.
Yes.
It'd be nice.
I make the motion.
We have a motion. Second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 11, consideration and possible action to approve an agreement between BCLR Harlingen Construction LLC and Killian Construction Company in accordance with development agreement with City Parlament Convention Center.
Subject to the provisions of the development agreement between the City of Harlingen and BCLR Harlingen Construction Limited Liability Corporation, Article IV, the city commission is to consider for approval the developer's selection for general contractor, the project budget, which is also referenced or known as the guaranteed maximum price, and the construction schedule. BCLR, or attached in your package, is a contract between BCLR and the selected contractor, Killian Construction of Springfield, Missouri, to build a convention center. As noted in the contract documents between these two parties, the maximum price, the guaranteed maximum price is set at $12,717,729.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, there is a typo on the contract. It should be twenty-nine based on all the documentation that we've had to date.
We want our dollar, right?
So it's a dollar here or there. This price includes a $200,000 contractor contingency, and it does not include the $351,659 for the fixed furnitures and equipment. The project timeline is 12 months. Staff has reviewed the attached documents and recommends approval. We've also had legal review of the document, and this is in accordance with the development agreement. Staff is recommending approval. It is a guaranteed maximum price. In addition to this fee, we will also have the furniture fee and some development costs, but this is strictly the construction cost.
Now, on the development, I mean, on the $200,000 contingency, if we don't use it, we can apply that to anywhere?
And according to the contract, that becomes part of the shared savings for the project. If you remember, when we presented the item to the 4B and the City Council, we estimated that we were going to achieve a $250,000 savings and some deductions in value engineering items. I don't believe we're going to be able to get there because we don't want to change the scope of the building. So we're going to utilize that $200,000 in that contingency. So we're going to ask that stay in there as shared savings. My staff is recommending approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agreement as presented?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, item, well, consideration and possible action to change the Harlingen City Commission regular meeting date of Wednesday, September 20, 2017, to Tuesday, September 19, 2017.
Mayor, Commissioner, I'm asking if we can move the date for the September 20 meeting to September 19. The mayor won't be here, and we will have an item on the agenda that I'd like everybody to be here for. So if we can move that instead of a Wednesday, have it on a Tuesday. I think the only budget we have pending is the DID budget. It should be ready, right?
Yes.
Waterworks also.
Waterworks.
Oh, and the waterworks, water.
Okay, is there a motion to move the regular City Commission meeting from the 20th to the 19th?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 13, consideration and possible action to change or cancel the Harlingen City Commission regular meeting date of Wednesday, October 4.
Mayor, Commissioners, the majority of the commission will be at the TML Conference in October, which begins on Wednesday, October 4. I would propose that we cancel this meeting and simply pick up the next meeting on October 18. We could move it to the 11th if we needed to, but I don't, where's Rodrigo? He's not here. So I don't think we have any planning.
We could always meet on the second if we really need.
If something comes up, if something comes up, we can call a special meeting. So let's just, is there a motion to cancel the meeting on October fourth?
I move that we cancel the meeting to the fourth.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item fourteen, board appointments.
I have an answer.
Any board appointments?
Yes. I have Setico, Linas, to the construction board, adjustments and appeals.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
Some move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Item fifteen, executive closed session, attorney consultation presented by point five of seven one Texas Government Code, provide legal advice and counsel in connection with certain collective bargaining issues contained in the notice of intent to bargain, valid duty recognized majority bargaining agents of the city's law enforcement officer and RLS police officer law enforcement association and the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the commission is going to consult with its attorney in the conference room. It is possible that there's a delay of action on the last item when we come out. Thank you all. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're out of executive session at six twenty-two PM, and the, we're going to pass on item sixteen, item seventeen, physical communication. I understand there's no, no one to sign up for physical communication, so we are adjourned. Thank you.